Start tonight with, uh, Ms. Adams, can I have a roll call, please?
For a work session?
Yeah.
Sure. Mayor Rick Mueller.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Rachel Gray.
Present.
Councilmember William Benning.
Present.
Councilmember Gregory Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Angelica Landry.
Present.
Councilmember Mark Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilmember Carolyn Umfree.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. I know, no, we don't normally do that, but I thought it'd be good for the record. Item number two is presentations and discussions. The first is, item A is the council meeting agenda for nine, nine September. And we obviously start with a call to order. Roll call and invocation by Pastor Rolls is gonna honor us again with his presence. Pledge of allegiance led by Dr. Landry. Acceptance of the agenda led by, initiated by Mr. Rodriguez. And then we have the city manager's report. Chuck, if you got anything you wanna share with us today before the...
Well, I'll be reporting on our EMS substation project, Mr. Mayor, and that's scheduled to kick off next week. So hopefully we'll be done in the spring timeframe, so that is ready to roll. And it's been, been a lot of work has been put into that, so, so it's really great to see that happening. Obviously, the Frye project is proceeding, and as long as we can keep the rains away, we can get that done more expediently. And this morning, we had a great advisory review board meeting with the county, and it appears that the county system finished in the black last year, and...
Congratulations.
Some, we still owe the supervisors about 1.3 million dollars, and about half of that will be paid this year with the fund balance that was generated. So hopefully by the end of the next fiscal year, and certainly by the fiscal year after, that obligation will be met and should help us maintain stable tipping fees going forward.
Great. That's good news. Glad we're making progress on that finally. It seems, it seems like it's taken a long time. Okay, next we go to item 2.1, which is the discussion, any possible action of the city council meeting minutes of 12, 20, 21. Any additions, errors, corrections, comments on the minutes for August 12th? Seeing none, the next is the, uh, action for the destination marketing organization. I know it's the, this is a consent agenda item, but we have somebody kinda explain that briefly to us? I think it was relatively self-explanatory.
He's coming up.
Oh, you're... Doing double duty.
Running the audio visual.
Multitasking today.
Okay.
Okay, council, thank you today. I hope this mic is on.
If not, you gotta run back and turn it on.
I'll just talk loud and hope everyone at home can hear me. This resolution is essentially a housekeeping item. So the city of Sierra Vista began acting as its own destination marketing organization, or DMO, in about 1990, 1991. According to the Arizona Office of Tourism, a DMO is defined as a not-for-profit organization or governmental unit that is responsible for tourism promotion and marketing of the destination on a year-round basis. And that that organization has a dedicated marketing budget, a website, or microsite, and a social media process. So the city of Sierra Vista has all three of these things, and it has for many years. But we were unable to locate an official action that designated the city as its own DMO. So by officially designating the city as its destination marketing organization, the city will be recognized by the state tourism office as the, quote, "official DMO", and thus remain eligible to apply for and participate in AOT programs like the rural co-op marketing program, trade shows, fan trips, grants, and other future opportunities. Be happy to answer any questions.
So cha-ching. We're eligible for some cha-ching. Any questions? Okay, thank you for coming up and explaining that, of course.
Thank you.
Okay, next, next item, item number 300, public hearings. And it's another liquor license, and I believe that's Ms. Adams.
Mayor Mueller, members of council, yes, this application is for a Series 7, which is a beer and wine bar liquor license slash axe throwing store. So fun times.
That's exactly how it sounds.
It's located over near Harbor Freight, in between Harbor Freight where the Spirit Halloween store was a few years ago. The notice of the public hearing was posted on the facility. It had originally been scheduled to be heard at your second meeting in August, but when that meeting was canceled, we re-upped the posting and posted the notice for this Thursday. We have heard no comments pro or con from the public. The police department has done their background check and has no objection to this license going forward. And if approved Thursday night, it will be returned to the state liquor board for final action.
Okay, great. Axe throwing is fun, but I've never done it with, I've never done it with drinking at the same time.
From what I can see from the drawing, you drink and then you go into the throwing room. So it's not a at the same time kinda thing, but yeah.
Safe issues there, no doubt. Any other questions or discussion on item number three?
I did like the drawing. Had a little, had a little drawing said, "No alcohol here, throwing here."
Throwing here, problem is the alcohol gets in here.
No standing here.
I mean, that's what we can expect from the baddest man in the whole downtown, so.
All right. Bird in the sea light front. We go on to item number four, sewer connection fees. Mr. Felix, sir.
Mayor, members of council, as we've discussed before in the prior resolution back in June, it's been many, many years since we've raised the connection fees for the sewer system. Since then, construction costs have gone up, if you've been looking at it, obviously significantly. This is to bring them back in line, but instead of doing a one large 60-plus percent increase based off the construction cost index over the last 10-plus years, we're phasing this in over a three-year period, about a 15% to 20% raise each year. We followed state law, and you did a public hearing notification, passed the resolution. We've received no comment so far. It's been on record with the city clerk for the past 60-plus days. It's been noticed on the website, and we've received no comments at all about this. You have to answer any questions you may have.
And this is a fee for new connections?
New, it's to connect to our current infrastructure, and it's to have plan for the expansion of the current plant. The original one had the package planned at $10 million. This has, this then would be moved, was moved to expanding the current plant.
When was the last time we increased it? You said many, many years, but...
Um, it was, should be on the cover, it was, I think, 2009.
It was. Okay, thank you.
I think it was 2009.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Felix. Appreciate it. We now go on to item number six, the memorandum with the PLM. I missed five?
Yeah, you missed five.
Oh, Felix is up again. Come on up, Mr. Felix. Reimbursement of certain capital expenditures. Yeah, well, that's an important one.
This is our annual resolution we pass every fall. We purchase equipment throughout the year. We package it. We decide whether or not we need to finance it or if we want to finance it at the end of the year. I mean, based off last June's interest rates of less than 1.5%, it's kind of almost free money and a good idea to do it. But if we don't need to finance it when rates are higher, then we do not do it. However, in order to have that option, the IRS requires that we pass a reimbursement resolution stating our intent to reimburse for the purchases that we do during the year. If we do not pass this resolution, any items bought more than 30 days prior to our actual financing cannot be financed. It's not an option. This gives us flexibility in how we do it. We also do the financing at the end of the year. Last year was the perfect example, again, that we only needed to finance some refuse trucks for cash flow for the refuse fund, and those trucks actually came in in August. Last month they came in. So we would have financed them in Ju-, July of 2020, been paying interest for over a year with no equipment, which is exactly why we don't do the financing upfront. And we cashed out every other piece of equipment, so that's... If we did the actual financing upfront, it would give us no points to go through with the year. You have to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Felix?
None.
Thank you, Mr. Felix. Now, I think we go to item six, Mr. Patichin.
Thank you, Mayor Mueller, members of the council. This resolution before you today is a very significant resolution. It authorizes the city manager, in this case me, to sign a memorandum of understanding in a cooperative agreement with Fort Huachuca, Cochise County, the city of Sierra Vista, and the Bureau of Land Management in support of the Bureau of Land Management's Resource Management Plan, which was approved in 2019, particularly as it pertains to water and the health of the river. Central to this agreement are provisions that identify 14 reaches of the river with criteria established to determine the relative health of each individual reach. And then if there is an indication that that particular reach is in a state of some sort of distress, it triggers a mechanism whereby the cooperators, in this case the four signatories, would then get together to discuss active management proposals to help deal with the state of the river in that reach. It does not commit the city to any particular funding or any courses of action. It just permits us to work cooperatively with our other partners to try and address the problem and solve it. This agreement has been many years in the making, and a lot of efforts went into that. In particular, Mayor Mueller attended early on, and of course, Ms. Yarborough worked with me on this as well. In particular, though, I would like to thank our water and environmental attorney, Ms. Sarah Ransom, who is here in the audience and can address any particular legal questions you have about the agreement. She really had a major hand in drafting and helping us negotiate some of the more sticky points of this particular agreement. But I believe it provides a good path forward for us to move on not only protecting the river, but protecting Fort Huachuca, and of course, our local economy and the orderly development of it in the future. And with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Mr. Patichin? I just mentioned, we did have a work session earlier where we had some lively discussions and great questions. where we had some lively discussions, some great questions. Anybody else have any additional items or questions?
Do we have, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Uh, do we have a timeline as to the other three signatories if we decide to, uh, have you sign it, uh, on Thursday?
Well, uh, that's a great question, Councilman Johnson, Mayor Mueller, members of the council. Uh, a lot of discussion actually has, uh, been focused on implementation of this plan and the various signatories and how we would proceed with this. I believe we will be first in the shoot, uh, on Thursday. Uh, the county, I think, is scheduled for next week, I believe, uh, and they will be, uh, voting at that time. And of course, then, uh, the fort and, and the BLM will sign. The actual signing ceremony is scheduled for September 21st, and that will be at the San Pedro House. And of course, you'll all be invited to, uh, attend that particular signing session. I believe that's a Tuesday. So, um, so that is, uh, basically how it will go down. There'll be a formal, um, thing there. But, uh, uh, this, uh, has, uh, extreme importance, and I felt that it was very important for the council to weigh in and have a vote on this, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, then, uh, I guess we're ready to move on, uh, to item B, discussion of the final report for the 2021 strategic plan. And I'm assuming this is Ms. Yarborough?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm very pleased to present your final report on your previous strategic plan, fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021. I'll hit some highlights, and then, of course, staff is here to answer any questions on the wrap-up. So of the 40 or so initiatives and sub-initiatives, there were only four that ended up being marked on hold or behind, and those were one on business incubation, which was accomplished in a different way without the assistance of the city. Um, a shop local campaign, um, the pandemic held that one up, but staff were able to do some other things in relation to the pandemic, and it carried over to the next strategic plan. And then the item on homelessness, which was also carried over to the next strategic plan. There were 16 items that were marked as ongoing, and I decided to mark things ongoing if they are going to continue as part of a regular work plan, and it may not be quite right to mark them as complete, which may indicate that it is something that is finished. So those are marked as ongoing. And there was also, um, words in each of the, um, items on how it would continue or, or next steps or so on. Then there were 16 items that were marked complete, and then four that were marked as scheduled for completion in the current fiscal year, which included the construction of the EMS station, uh, Phase One of Frye Boulevard, Avenida Esquina construction, and then the stormwater master plan completion will all be done in the current fiscal year. So just some of the highlights going through, um, the different focus areas in your Engage focus area. Staff were successful in finding and identifying, uh, the Engage Sierra Vista platform, which if you saw from the statistics, the usership is increasing steadily. Um, overall, staff enhanced social media strategy in a number of areas, both the cities and in, um, different departments. In the Enhance focus area, I mentioned the four projects that will be completed this fiscal year. In addition, staff were successful in identifying multi-use path funding through the Federal Transit Administration, which is something that has been on strategic plans for at least the past 10 years that have been here. So that was, um, a really exciting, um, accomplishment. Um, renegotiation of the tribute-specific plan was accomplished, the new Met Parks Master Plan you just voted on. Um, there, our partnership with Sierra Vista Unified School District led to two land purchases over the past couple of years. We're almost completed, um, with the process to purchase the land adjacent to Roadrunner Park, and of course, that partnership with the school district will continue. Um, the success of the West Sierra Vista redevelopment area was demonstrated. Um, in the Empower focus area, um, staff are working on developing partnership opportunities with higher education, and we have multiple potential projects, um, to positively impact the community on that one. And under the Enjoy focus area, um, the Parks, Rec, and Library staff were very successful in elevating a number of our events with rather significant participation increases, as well of, of course, suc- successful implementation of sports tourism, um, prioritization, and you have the, the data in, in there on how that has resulted as well. So, um, again, I'm pleased to present this final report. Um, myself and staff are happy to take any questions you might have on it.
Questions for Mrs. Yarborough on the report?
So I just wanted to, first of all, it's great work, um, from staff on what we got accomplished on this plan. I think it's fantastic. And as far as like the incubator's concerned, just as a kind of anecdotal comment, I guess I'll say, is I think it's really great when we can see private industry and private people in the community do something on their own without the help of government. That's, I don't think, ever a bad thing, so. I was happy to see that actually, too.
On page nine of 18 on your report, and the report was wonderful, and I, it's a great, it's a great update as to how we're progressing on the strategic plan. Uh, I'm focusing on number nine, Engage Economic Development Stakeholders. We just, we had a work session regarding, uh, the, uh, implementation of a Economic Development Advisory Council Group Committee, whatever we want to call it, and I was wondering how that was progressing.
Where, where are we? We're on, we're on B.
You're on a different one.
We're still looking over the last.
We're still on this year.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You're, you're...
I'm jumping ahead. I'm jumping ahead.
They didn't answer the question, Chuck, so it's a...
Okay.
Very, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Johnson, uh, with the, the item that you're referring to, uh, will be on your next work session, uh, which is September 21st. Uh, Mr. Boone and I have been working on a proposal, uh, for you, uh, as to how, uh, it will proceed, and we'll make that recommendation at that time. But I think we have a solid proposal for you.
I'm sorry, I was on the wrong page.
That's, that's quite a, quite a...
Good question. Question, okay. Anything else on the, on the, on the former plan?
I'll make a comment really quick. I think it's been really neat to kind of see how things have progressed, um, and how things have been kind of like checked off and stuff. Um, and I'd really liked to see the, um, the participation for some of the events. That was really, really neat to see, um, how much it increased, and I'm looking forward to see how it increases next year, too. So that was really neat to see.
Mr. Petich?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think this report really reflects the value of the strategic planning process, uh, to the organization and to the city as a whole. Uh, it really has some concrete goals for us to achieve, and timelines, uh, attached to them, and you can see, uh, as a result, uh, a lot of things, uh, getting accomplished, and I think, uh, it's a great process for us, and I believe the next plan, yeah, when Victoria goes over that, will reflect that as well.
And it also, uh, reflects a lot of good work from the staff. So we want to thank, make sure we thank the staff and the leaders on the staff for, for all the good work they've done.
I have one more. I'm sorry, and I apologize that I missed this. On eight point two, where you have it, um, Victoria on hold for the next strategic plan, this is, to me, more of an ongoing thing. So why did we choose on hold instead of just ongoing?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Gray, I left that there because that was what was on the previous report, so I just didn't change it. But there is a goal included on the next one.
In the next one, okay. I just, we seem to, we're always continuously working on this particular item. Okay.
Well, to go, well, as she said, we had that great report from our intern on the different partners we have and the different elements we already have in the city. So I would agree with Rachel more.
And the continuum of care, and starting to meet regularly again and, and become more organized. So that's a good thing.
Okay. All right, anything else on, on, uh, the 2021 plan? All right, implementation of the 2223 plan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this plan looks a little bit different than the last plan because it was set up a little different. So in the previous plan that we just wrapped up, um, the way it was developed is council was involved to set the goals, and then council left and, and staff developed the initiatives. And so you saw that when, um, council approved the plan, and then council expressed that you would like to see something different the next time. So when this plan was developed, the goals were developed as a group, and then council was also involved in setting the initiatives. So the, the language of the initiatives didn't change from the, the plan that you approved, and so that expressed itself a little differently with how the implementation plan was then written. So the initiatives are how you accomplish the goals that are, that are in the plan. So what this does is gives you a general roadmap on how we're going to go about, um, achieving the initiatives, which are going to achieve the goals that were set. So you'll see a lot of words used in here that are like develop or evaluate or analyze, and that's generally what will happen for many of these, um, initiatives over the next year or so, um, with action then coming the following year. Um, not in every case, but that's often how it works. So some of the initiatives, um, that were developed with mayor and council and staff, um, were very specific, and so there wasn't much to add when the implementation steps were written. And some, some good examples of that were if you looked at goals, um, two and three, which were on, um, ASRS and the PSPRS, and then maintaining a strong bond rating in general fund reserves. So initiatives A and B on number two, and A, B, and C on number three were very specific. So there isn't a whole lot more to add. So that's why there's not a lot of detail on those specific items. So it depends on the goal, and it depends on the initiative, how much detail was given. So, um, our next steps on this, so you have our roadmap. Um, again, all staff are, are here to answer any questions you might have on the process for any of these specific ones. Um, our next steps, you'll continue to get updates every six months. Um, you'll often see some of these end up in executive reports as well. Um, and then, of course, questions are always welcome, and, um, information can be shared on any of these items at any time. So if there are any specific, um, questions on any of the items, staff and I are happy to take them at this time.
Questions or comments from Ms. Yarborough? And she's open for any, anytime. She just said, okay. So as you go through this, as you have a chance to think about it, that's, that's usually my problem with these, is they're so detailed, I try to remember what we discussed, what was, what was really the goal, and it takes me a little time to digest and come back and ask, uh, questions either of the city manager or the appropriate, uh, department head. So don't, don't be afraid to, to do that as well. Yes, ma'am.
So I just want to comment, um, to all of staff again, thank you for the hard work, and also thanks for listening to council. I much enjoyed this process and felt like I had a, a more of a voice in going forward with this one, so I really appreciate that.
I would second that. That was, that was different this time around. I like the way we did it, just the strategic planning.
Snacks were good, too.
That's the best day, right? Okay, any, anything else on this item?
I think it was organized.
Then we'll go to, uh, discussion on Council Policy Procedures Manual, and is, who's doing this one?
Jill is.
Jill is. Okay, Jill, you're for.
Mayor Mueller, members of council, it has been about four years since we've done any, uh, updates or amendments to the Council Policy and Procedure Manual, and because some of the stuff had become dated and needed, uh, updating, I've been working on it for a while, and unfortunately, it got sat down for a while, and then it came back. I'm bringing it to you with chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances because there's some interrelationship with some of the changes that have been requested in the Council Policy and Procedure Guidelines, and chapter 30 also needed a little review. So primarily, the main changes that are in this document, other than little nits and tucks here and there, is, um, a change in the appointment of the Mayor Pro Tem to have that position not be a council resolution, it just be a mayoral appointment. Um, the channel 12, we no longer rebroadcast council meetings on channel 12 at this time, so that's been deleted. Uh, there has been an insertion of the electronic attendance at council meetings and work sessions. We now have the capability of either webex or telephonic participation, and I would appreciate some input from council as to whether there should be any kind of guidelines as to when that can be used and when it is not, whether it's for council, for staff, for the public. Um, we have a lot more available to us to let people attend our meetings than we did before, and so I'd like to know how you all would like to use that.
You want to do that now?
We can do it however you like. We can stop here.
I just want to make a comment. That's page 10, uh, of 30, and it's paragraph J is what you're talking about, right? Says the council chambers, audios, visual system now has the capability to allow council members, staff, and/or public attendance via webex. There is also, uh, an option for attendees to participate by phone, which we've both, we've already done both of those. Uh, in the discussion, you want, if electronic attendance is allowed, you want any specific rules to apply. So, uh, we're already doing it, so I think it's kind of a moot point, but, uh, specific rules, as far as council, you know, if we're still following the Roberts Rules of Order generally, I think we're okay. Uh, are there rules as to what can be submitted over the phone or whatever else from the general public? Uh, I don't, I don't know. I, I don't really have an opinion. Uh, but if we can get as close to whatever it would be in, in person, I, I don't have a problem with that. Uh, and we've had people call in and do presentations over the phone or do presentations electronically as well, I'm sure.
Generally, they've been arranged in the, in advance.
Well, they have to be arranged in advance.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's one of the things.
Maybe that's a comment that needs to be, be in here. I think generally, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, we're accept, we're very accepting of people presenting to us, no matter what the subject is, long as if it's a call to the public, it's still just five minutes. Uh, if it's a, uh, somebody that's working with a staff member to present an item, I mean, we give a little more leeway, whether it's a phone call or whether it's a presentation. But, I mean, the, I think, general rules that are in, when we do it in person, the rules that follow in person probably should apply as much as applicable to those that do it electronically. Am I, am I off base, guys?
No, sir.
Anybody got any brighter ideas? That's what I should ask, because there's probably six people that have brighter ideas.
Well, my, my only concern, Mr. Mayor, is the, uh, is the, the public, the public attendance via Zoom. I mean, they already have that at their, they already have that ability on YouTube, or, you know, my wife always enjoys watching us here. Um, but as far as participation, I, I don't know. Maybe a presenter is okay, but...
Well, the, you know, what I'm, what I'm talking about is a presenter or a item that's on the agenda is fine. If we have a, if we have a, a call to the public is really the challenge, because...
Right.
How are we going to know ahead of time that somebody wants their five minutes?
Right.
And are they going to be able to arrange the call ahead of time to do it? And that's going to be a challenge, and that could be, that could be messy.
That would be the only thing that would concern me, Mr. Mayor, because we did have a presenter from Tucson when we were discussing the, uh, the grant funds, uh, for the various not-for-profits, and she gave a presentation and...
And that was, but again, that was part of a, a staff presentation, not part of a call to the public.
Right.
So you're suggest, you know, how do we, do we, the challenge with call to the public is obviously we want the public to talk to us, but the problem with that is if they get the idea the same night they're listening to a presentation by staff and want to call or buzz in, there's, there's no way we can really do that effectively. It's got to be pre-arranged almost if they want to do a presentation. Yes, sir.
Do we have the ability to run a switch, if you would? Basically, a screener, hey, I'm calling to do a call to the public on this item, or just a call to the public, like they do a radio station and have that person on hold waiting?
Most nerdly.
Yeah, where you'll get the information.
I don't think we have that immedi, we don't have...
Generally, we have an extension of the phone system. We're after hours, so there's no one answering it, who could transfer a call.
It's got to almost be, if somebody wants to do that in a call to the public, they almost have to arrange it the Tuesday before to be able to be there.
I'm concerned about crank calls.
I got a different idea. It might still yours. On webex, you can, you can, if you don't want your picture and stuff, you can actually... On WebEx, you can, you can, if you don't want your picture stuff, you can actually call into the WebEx. You could be put on hold at the WebEx. You could be screened on the WebEx saying you want to talk.
The other, the easiest, the easiest way to do it is allow, just like we're doing now, is if somebody wants to make a comment, they can either make a comment at the meeting, or I mean, before the meeting, and, and it's in our packets.
Yes, sir.
So really, that's the best way to do it.
I have a comment, too. It might be interesting to see like what some of the other cities are doing, if they have that option. And then on the, on the bottom of the agendas, it says that for special needs or accommodations, please contact Jill Adams, city clerk, twenty-four hours, I mean seventy-two hours in advance prior to the meeting or activity. So, I mean, that's on the bottom of our agenda. So, I mean, we can follow that, but then also see what maybe some of the other cities are doing, since they probably have kind of figured out.
Jill, have you done any research with other cities?
I haven't yet, I wanted to kind of feel.
The county is actually doing this as well.
Are they?
I'd be concerned about crank calls.
Well, that's the thing, we don't want somebody coming up and saying.
That's what we were just saying, too. There's a, there's a thing going around.
Tell a joke on, on the, on the air or whatever.
Flushing the toilet.
And part of the issue, too, with the WebEx is that we might not set up a WebEx if we don't know people are going to call in. So that, the pre-registration would go a long way to help it out quite a bit. But I can do some research.
Well, I, and I suggest we do that and we bring this, we bring this item back for discussion.
Okay.
Okay. Please continue.
Okay, another request that I would appreciate council input is requirement of an open meeting law training on a regular basis of council members. Currently, we don't have any, any language in there, other than council members will abide by the open meeting law. Usually the council, as part of the new council orientation, will go through an open meeting law training and that's usually about it, as in past years.
Well, here's, here's the question for the council, I guess, is the initial training, I think is critical and it's good we have that. But the, we, when there are changes, we try to have the lawyer come talk to us in, in the session and explain what those, what those, if there are major changes, and there haven't been real major changes for some time, the question is, what do you feel about refresher and should it be required? I would hope that if somebody felt they needed a refresher, they would be able to get with Jill and say, hey, I understand something changed, or I didn't, I don't really understand why I got to do it this way. And then, then they arrange for appropriate training or discussion or whatever it may be, rather than requiring council members to, to every two years to go to a class. I, I think that's the best way to handle it, am I off base? And we can certainly see if there are, how other communities handle that as well.
I just have a couple of questions about this. Jill, does it currently in this handbook, and I'm not seeing it, say that a council member is required to attend the initial training?
No.
So that might be something we want to consider because, you know, that affects us all. And secondly, maybe, given the option on, because I'm assuming you would be conducting the training periodically as the city clerk.
Probably either myself or Nathan, the two of us, yes.
And, and having that option, I know, I personally like refreshers because things do change that I might not even be aware of and with technology and the way that it's constantly moving, new things come up and new questions that I think are pertinent to all of council. But I would be comfortable if initially council members required to take training for open meeting law, because it's so important. And then a possible refresher that you can opt to attend or not.
Or can be requested by the council.
Or can be requested by the council at any point, yes.
Great.
Yes, I, when, when I got on council, I, I had to sit through some rather boring sessions from the Arizona League of Cities. And I just got on my phone here and there's a newly elected officials training for open meeting law, December eleventh, twenty twenty, put on by the Arizona League. So it's a, it's a two-hour presentation. So if you need training, there it is, it's right on your phone. I don't, I don't, I don't think we should have mandatory refreshers.
I'm not proposing mandatory refreshers, I'm proposing mandatory training at the beginning of your term.
I thought that's what they signed me up for. How about Ms. Landry, do you?
Yeah, we did do some training, but like if you do it here, you have a little bit more control about, about how it's presented and maybe, because we did it virtually. And so, I mean, if you do it in person, maybe, I don't, I mean, it just, I mean, having the option is nice, too. I mean, it is nice, sometimes, sometimes it depends on how things are presented to how you take it in.
And maybe more locally focused.
Right, yeah, I mean, there could be some things, and it might not take two hours, maybe it'd just be like half an hour or something, you know? I don't know.
Well, I think we all understand it's important to do the public meeting law, especially with the records, records law and, and the different types of media that we all use. So I, I'm, I'm in favor of a initial requirement. I'm not really in favor of a mandatory refresher, however, we do have to have refreshers available because things may change, or in my case, you get forgetful.
Yes, me too.
Okay, it's true, and they, they post the new, the updated ones on the League's YouTube page, every time there's a new one.
And the League is a good place, a good source, and that's where we get most of our instructional material anyways, Jill.
Well, I, I think too, if we, if we posted on our website, too, I, I think it allows the community to learn more about it also. If someone has a question, you know, they know where to go now and they can actually take the training themselves, because some are misguided, some don't know what it's about. So just having it available for refresher on our website, well, all you got to do is click the link, I think that's a good idea. And mandatory, I thought it was mandatory, too.
Get more than enough information there, Jill?
Oh, that's perfect, that helps quite a bit. Let's see, then the next major change was to update the board and commission section to bring it in line with the changes in the system that you all approved, what, a year ago, year and a half ago? So that's pretty standard, just transferring that information over to lay out the regulatory, non-regulatory. There was a question about rules related to use of personal electronic equipment for official duties.
Before we go there, on page fifteen, you have paragraph A and you have subparagaths one through four. And you struck, you've stricken out the complete paragraph two, but you didn't change the numbers below to two and three.
Oh, I see that, okay, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, not a problem. We, we have this discussion on a regular basis to the consternation of IT. But when we get new council members and existing council members and we provide city-issued electronics for use for tablets, packages, packets, all that, and generally, most individuals like their own equipment. And there are ways that that could possibly be worked out where we could allow that to happen. I, again, IT doesn't like having outside equipment hooking into our network, but it, it has become an issue on a regular basis with council members. And I kind of wanted to get Jill's thoughts about that, if that's, because, you know, we have the equipment to give to each council member, but if you prefer an iPad over a Droid or your phone over this phone and.
But we're talking, let me get this straight. We're not talking the preference of, I want to keep my own phone, I want to keep my own laptop. We're talking, the city offers laptop X, and because somebody has a preference for another system or another, or another whatever, they want to get the, the one that's offered by Y, which causes our purchasing folks to buy a Y, Y device rather than the standard X device.
Generally, we don't buy, say, for example, you have people who like Apple and you have people who like everything else. And the city doesn't do Apple. The city doesn't do Apple and so people with Apple preferences are forced to use Androids or Microsoft or whatever the equipment that the city uses. And that's, that has been an issue, and, and a lot of it is just preference and user knowledge, too, because they know how to, people know how to use the Apple stuff and there's some differences.
But the city is not buying that.
Correct, the city is not buying Apple, for example.
Ms. Yarborough, who's going to go? Victoria?
Mr. Mayor, if I could add a little bit of clarification, Jill and I have had a lot of discussions on this over, actually, the past couple of years. This stemmed out of some previous council members, actually nobody who's currently on council, who had, had difficulty using some of the technology that they were required to use. And so we require tablets and phones to access, our tablets and phones to access the city network. And so we wanted to pose the question to council, whether you wanted to be allowed to use your own devices, understanding some of the restrictions that that will come with. And Jill may be able to fill you in better, but it opens up some of your personal information to public records requests and so on. But we have the security options now to offer that to council members if you would choose to do that. So that, that's the issue at hand. If you want it, if you're more comfortable using your iPad or you're more comfortable using your personal laptop at home, you could be given that option and we can make it so if you understand the, some of the restrictions and challenges that come with that.
I would go for that. Well, I, I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with Greg doing his own thing on his own, own equipment. But again, it's, part of that's, he's got to realize that part of that's going to be public documents. And he could be, he could be required to provide copies or whatever, whatever electronic means based on a, based on an open meeting request. So, you know, if, you know, as long as the, as long as the council person is aware that if he's doing council business on a phone or a laptop, that that's public information and subject to be able to be taken, you know, be viewed by anybody or accessed by anybody, I should say. And they're okay with that, that's, I don't see a problem with, I don't see a problem with that, even though it's a pain in, probably a pain in the neck to make sure that we as a city government can ensure that that's provided to the public.
Well.
Go ahead.
So this is just for Jill. So Jill, like if we have an example of someone saying, I would like to see, I don't know, correspondence between council members during a council meeting or whatever they suspect that, and we have our personal device, what, what would that look like?
Generally, if a public records request is submitted to me and it referenced any information that I need to get from a council member, I put that out via email, that I have a public record request that would cover emails, texts, any other notes, documents that you have on your own private equipment, and you have to provide those to me and then I have to provide those to the, to the individual requesting it. There's also retention that has to be considered because if you create work-related documents, there, there is a multi-year retention period that those have to be kept, whether on those or whether you upload them to us. If you go off council, there's, there's different things. It can all be fixed, I mean, we can, we can do it all. That's the main thing, though, is that they are open for public scrutiny. And on some levels, if people are challenging things, the devices may have to be temporarily surrendered and then given back. If there is, like with any other document that a city employee creates, there's that overlap of personal or you think it's on yours, so you say something you don't want to say, you can't delete it, you can't delete part of it, it's, it, it is a full public record that has to then be, it's, it's the council member's responsibility to maintain that as such.
Follow-up to that is currently on our city phones, and this is all just for clarification, I pretty much know what I want to do, but clarification. Currently, our city phones, we publish that cell number as being the public being able to get ahold of us. Would that be a requirement on our personal cell numbers if we were to use our personal devices?
It would not, however, it, it is out there when you run for office, whatever phone number you put there. So if that's your cell number, which is most people's only number these days, it's, it is out there that people can find that, which that's kind of when you switch over to a city equipment, that gives you that buffer where people aren't necessarily calling you on your home phone, because that's, that's one of the nice things about having city-issued equipment, is that's for your city life and then you still have a private life available to you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm just thinking out loud here on how I use the devices that the city has provided for me. First of all, I've only had one conversation on that phone, and that was with Mr. Mayor when we were trying to set up an appointment. The rest of them are voicemails that my, my, my auto, my automobile insurance has, has lapsed or.
Insurance.
Yeah, the insurance. The other thing, too, is on the tablet, I go and I look at the reading room. That's all I do. I don't, I, I don't use it for anything else. And if, if I could just download it on my Mac or my, or my iPad or my phone, life would be a lot easier, because I end up forwarding a lot of stuff to myself, the agendas, for example, so I can print them out before I get here. So that's what I use them for, and I'm just, I'm just explaining how I use them, I don't know how.
One of the facts is true, we all use our devices differently and for different things.
Right.
That's part of Jill's challenge here, is how do you get a standard that's going to suit everybody?
And it can be done. I mean, the, the whole idea is to have a policy that allows you to do your best work and be most comfortable, as long as we all understand what the responsibilities are.
And, you know, I, I know how electronic media can be construed as actually an open meeting, or, you know, you're not, you're, you're conducting business among a quorum, and that's not permissible under the law. And I know that if you belong to a website and everybody else is a member of that particular Facebook website, you know, it's possible you could have conflicts there. We just have to remember to, you know, let's, let's operate in the open meeting law personally and forget about conducting business electronically. I think that's one thing we should, should think about.
Jill, are you getting the discussion you need?
Yes.
And what are you, what, what, what are you going to recommend out of this? Because I'm not sure.
I, I believe that with some guidelines and with input from IT, that we could make accommodation to allow, and, you know, the phones, I get it, that's your choice. And, and so I don't think that there's any reason we can't do it, but there would have to be some guidelines as far as retention and how the documents and any correspondence and all of that kind of stuff is maintained, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
What we can also do for the next discussion is put together for council so you understand exactly what the requirements would be for using your own personal devices. And as Jill said, what the guidelines would be for public records retention and so on, so council can understand what they'd be getting into if they wanted to include that.
The last major section that was changed was courtesy of Mayor Pro Tem Gray, a social media policy. I, if, if you would mind addressing that, Mayor Pro Tem, I am not a social media person, so I do not understand it and I will fess up to that all the way.
Sure. So I thought through thinking, and I want to make it very clear, this has nothing to do with anyone who's currently on council. I'm looking into the future and setting a, trying to set a standard and a guideline for us as well as into the future long-term. But really, this came from another city that I thought was a short, concise statement for best practices when it comes to social media and how we conduct ourselves. And a lot of it is pretty much just common sense and common logic, but is now in written form so that we have a guideline on how to conduct ourselves. And that's really it, I don't think there's anything in here that's out of the way. One thing, and I know I am guilty of not doing this and I have got to add that to my page, is to make sure that it's understood that when I express a view, a personal view that does not necessarily reflect the views of this council and the direction going forward.
So, yeah, if you, I'm sorry.
Has the state issued a social media policy yet?
No. The word I got from the League was that once the previous. The word I got from the league was that once the previous attorney left, and they now have a new attorney, that the new attorney would not be taking up this issue anytime in the near future.
Okay. And I, I only ask, 'cause I, I don't wanna put something in our, in our policies and then turn around and the state says, "Oh, this, you can't do this", and we're saying you can, to where we have to re, relook at it, but
Yeah, and it can always be amended, but I, I don't believe, I mean, the state government seems to be very slow in keeping up with these sort of things. So I have not seen or heard, or actually what I have heard is that we're not gonna be seeing any kind of guidelines from state or the league anytime soon.
The, the, the one, the one problem I have with the way this is written is down in the fourth paragraph. How do you know if there's been a quorum of council on a, on a thread?
You can, you can see it. So, with, like, I'll use Facebook as an example. If there's a post and then council members start commenting underneath that
That's if they comment, what if they just read, you may have two, two, three other people read.
That's unfortunately
That's a one-way con
That, yeah, so Jill and I had this talk.
So what is that?
Yeah, generally, if council members have, have the right to express an opinion
If you have two councilmember, members talking to each other, and there's two more listening, technically, that's a quorum, right?
That would be a quorum, yes.
Be a quorum. And how do, how do you track that?
Social media is not to debate opinions or debate items that council will be addressing, but that doesn't mean you can't have an opinion. But it, the, it's the debate part that should stop, there shouldn't be any debate.
Any interaction, as far as conversation, yeah.
And that's among councils, so councils should, that, that would be part of an open meeting law training, is that you don't engage in back-and-forth commenting about business of council anywhere, but on social media especially, yes.
And so how I try my best to avoid that is if there is any group that is not public, I make, I try to make sure, and, and it's, I try to review that periodically, is that I'm not in that group because it's not open to the public. So even as just Rachel Gray, who, you know, you're gonna go see pictures of my puppies most of the time, then it doesn't, we don't have this perception that all of council is in this private closed group and seeing all these things that the general public cannot see. So that's, but that's just my rule of thumb. But we didn't wanna get into all that type of specific, we wanted to keep it generic enough that it was really, really just best practice and how we, as council members, have a guideline on what to do.
Any, any other discussion? On that same note, I, I know, I do it, you like a post, so if someone comments on it, you can see the comment 'cause it'll regenerate, so if people are having a discussion on a matter of interest, you'll like it so it'll keep generating when the comment's made. If four of us like a post, whether, no one knows the intent of a like. Does that constitute a quorum and we're discussing that matter, or are we just paying attention to that matter?
I think you're, I think you're treading, I think you're
It's very
I think you're treading on the open meeting law, right?
My rule of thumb is just not to do that.
Right.
That's what I try to do.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, that, that is my rule of thumb, is just not to express an opinion one way or the other when they're debating or talking about an issue.
Yeah, and, and I use my city council Facebook page to inform the public. There's a meeting coming up, there's a, an event that you maybe wanna go see. I use it as an information thing, and I, you know, if, I, I block some people that wanna get into a peeing match about something, and, you know, I'm not gonna go there.
That's not wise, right?
So, correct, and also, when you do that, and I notice, I see that you, you always reference back to the city, and I think that's what, I think that's in here, that we said, if you're, if you're referencing a document, like an agenda or something like that, always post a link back to that document so that, and the intent behind that was so that you're not taking portions of it and only giving partial information to the public.
Right, I recently did that with our MPO plans that we approved at that meeting, and that gave the public a chance to take a look at those documents, if they didn't know what it was about. I expressed no opinion whatsoever on it, but merely reported on it.
And, and that, that post actually is a perfect example of what we're talking about. You linked everything back to the original document so that there was no perception that you were trying to cloud any judgment of the public, and that's all that that's saying to do.
So, on that note, though, you seen the post he made, I seen it.
Well, we had already made the, we'd already voted on it in the MPO. And he, he literally said, here's what we did in this meeting.
It's informational in nature, he's putting out information, you're seeing information, you're not discussing, debating, trying to get people to vote on something, or trying to sway opinions. It was, this happened, here's information, you want more, go here.
And a lot of this has to do with just a trust factor as well. I mean, we all have to agree to behave in the best way that we know possible to do the most effective job for the public that we can.
I think it's just a common sense thing, if you're gonna be on social media, you know it's gonna be there forever.
That is true.
We shouldn't infringe on too many people, their amendments, to do whatever they want on their personal stuff. We shouldn't get into that business, but as long as you know, whatever you put is out there.
Yeah.
Use it however you want, but just be careful. I mean, I think we just shouldn't get into too much, like, making rules, you can't do this, can't do that, 'cause it's too cloudy when it comes to social media.
I agree.
And always changing.
Yes.
Yes.
So Jill, are you as confused as I am?
No, I think I'm there. And for someone who just looks, I don't, I don't really know, but I will
I was gonna have a hard time trying to summarize what was just
Well, let me, let me give it a shot and I'll put it out and people can bring it back to me however you like.
I, I have, I have one, one question. Each one of us has a unique IP address. Is that how the city would be able to see that Greg Johnson is on his Mac and he wants into the, the city system?
I, I think that's why we're gonna have to consult with IT and see how the best way to set this up, because they've got their area, we've got our area. We'll do what we can to come up with a system that works best with everybody and their equipment, but is safe and protected.
Okay. Jill, you get anything else?
The chapter thirty, which got tagged along with that primarily because of the change in the Mayor Pro Tem appointment process, but also the very, very first section about compensation of council members. I could not find any record that the required review ever happened of that after the last time it was passed. And so, if, there were a couple other updates to this section, so I thought we might as well just do it. And if there were any thoughts from council on whether that needs amendment
That's probably on me, because I think I was the one that said we needed to put that in there. And then as a mayor, four years later, I forgot to, I forgot to add that. So, the question I'll ask today is, is there any value in discussing on a future date, council compensation?
And that would be compensation for future councils, not
Yeah, it's always future councils in Arizona, 'cause you have to be re-elected to the position before you can get your future compensation.
So you're saying like twenty years from now? When
When we all retire?
Thing is, if we voted today to raise the, raise our salaries, you wouldn't be able to get it until you were re-elected.
It would be for the next council.
You have to be re-elected to the position before you get, so you could have people who were re-elected before you who are getting a higher salary for two years than you, than you are. But that's the way it works.
I didn't, I didn't run, I didn't run for city council to get a salary, so I, I would not be in favor of any
That's, and that's what I figured, there's not gonna be too much trouble, but at least we did that. And I guess we gotta do it every four years.
The way it reads to me, you only have to do it the one time.
Okay. We just did it. I think, I think it's, I think it's appropriate to review that on a periodic basis, that's, that's the comment I made initially.
You could take that requirement out. It's not a state statute that says you have to review it four years after the passage, so you could just take that section, be out, and put in something that this shall be reviewed by council as from time to time as required, or as requested.
As requested by council.
Who would review it, though?
Yeah, how does that work?
You all would.
We do.
We would do the review process.
We do discussion, we say
Discuss it, vote, and all that.
When I first came on, came on, we were making two hundred bucks a month. First job I've ever had where the social security didn't take any money out.
Yeah.
And a year or two later, we basically got together, so council said, we need to raise, we need to raise the, the salary. So we raised the mayors, we raised the council, and then when we were re-elected, we were able to get that, get that raise. But I don't think we've, we've raised it.
I'm gonna question.
The last time we did a raise, it's been quite a while.
Two thousand eight.
Two thousand eight. Not that
So, I'm not, I'm not, for discussion's sake, I, because some people don't seem to understand discussion, as discussion's sake. Not saying I'm in favor one way or the other, I think there is merit in reviewing it and doing an end-up review with research on the other cities, how they're doing things, what that looks like, our responsibilities and roles, and if that's kind of in line. Where I'm coming from that is, we do have people that wanna run that, quite frankly, just can't afford to because that would, it would be such an infringement and such an imposition. So I, and it might be, we find, it's just fine the way it is, or it's not, but I would like to have some informed, educated options to look at. So I would like to review it.
So that's one, that we have a consensus.
Periodic review is okay with me.
And the last time was, was two thousand eight?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
Yeah, then I guess we can
And that way we get to show the public, too, and I think that's important.
Well, yes, it's never about idea to review something and make sure you're still in line with where you need to be.
So, what I'm hearing is that we need to, sometime in the next year, Mr. Petigee, we need to, what I'm hearing a request is that we need to look at, like, city sizes, like, with similar
Populations.
So, you know, populations, similar budgets.
So just some research and
Just some research and provide that to us first. And if there's a, if there's a need, then we can certainly have a request for a work session and put it on a work session, does that, does that make everybody happy?
Yep.
Or at least comfortable.
Yep.
We can knock that out.
Okay, so that's what I'm hearing. All right, so that's the salary discussion, Jill, I think we need to put it in the, in black and white.
I, I can do that.
Okay.
In chapter thirty, then, the only other real changes were to kind of bring it into the twenty-first century where notices and meetings are no longer served by the police department. And everybody knows that we don't smoke during council meetings.
It hasn't fallen down, yes.
Yeah, so that, nothing, nothing major on that one, and then the change in the Mayor Pro Tem appointment process.
I have a question on the Mayor Pro Tem issue, why was that taken out?
I'm asked, I'm the one that asked for that, so I can address it. I asked for it because the Mayor Pro Tem, the purpose of the Mayor Pro Tem is to represent the mayor
In his absence.
In his absence.
Her absence, too.
Or her absence, whomever in the future, and, and currently it may be. That was a recent change to have council appoint that, I think it was done when we did this, this manual, or to have the council approve it. But my standard and reasoning on that was that the voters elected the mayor and therefore the mayor is deciding who should be the pro tem to represent that position in his absence. So it just didn't make a lot of sense for the council, and also knowing the history and the reason why it was put in. Again, very recent, the explanation for why it was put there in the first place was a superficial, petty one, so.
I can't imagine a council actually
Well, and the thing is, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem either way, quite frankly. If I would, if I would pick somebody that I didn't think, if, as mayor,
Right.
whether it's me or not, if they pick somebody that is not gonna try to build consensus in the council, then there's a, there's gonna be a problem regardless, whether the mayor appoints him or whether four members of the council don't like the person.
Then if you take out the, that last sentence, how long before you can re-review that choice?
Two years.
It's every two years.
It's a two-year appointment.
Yeah, and that's what coincides with council election. Obviously, if there would be a vacancy in the Mayor Pro Tem slot, then it's gonna be more frequent than that.
Also, I looked at this as, as council may not always agree with who the voters chose as mayor either, but we certainly don't stop that, because it's the voters that made that decision. So it just makes sense to me that the mayor would choose who he felt best represented that position in his or her absence.
And that's his prerogative, however, if the other council members don't agree, I think you're taking away something that is my right to disagree with who the mayor appoints as pro tem.
And then, what, we strong-arm a different person in that position, like
Well, you know, it's gotta be, it's gotta be according to resolution, and we're taking that away, so.
But we also might not, I guess, I'm repeating myself a little bit, we also don't, I'm trying to be careful how I word this. We might not necessarily agree with who's chosen as mayor either, and we certainly, as a council, just have to work with that person. I guess that's what I'm coming from on this, is, and I'm not married to either one of it, it just didn't make sense to me to do it this way, because it is literally representing that, the position of mayor, not the position of the city or the council, and the voters have chosen who is their mayor, not the council.
So then, should the voters have a pro tem pick, too?
That's why, I, I, I understand where you're coming from, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem Gray. I don't care either way, I think anyone on council should be able to step in and represent the city, and that's why we're here, and that's why we're elected. How the Mayor Pro Tem is selected, I mean, the mayor selects other positions that we feel
Without it, without
Without our vote, and without a consensus. I, I think, once you start putting the, the people don't vote for the Mayor Pro, or voted for the mayor, we don't have a say, I kinda go where, where Councilman Rodriguez is with, well, should the, should the people vote for the Mayor Pro Tem? Or do we have something in place, the highest vote getter out of the three is automatic? I mean, there's so many different ways we could go, where it's easier for the mayor to sit down and talk to everybody and come up with, I mean, I don't know, I Well, part of this, you gotta, you gotta realize that, as mayor, you sit down and look at all six people, at least I do, and I think we've done that with past several mayors, and look at strengths and weaknesses, and whether they got the most amount of votes during their selection cycle or not, really is irrelevant. It's the talent and the agreement on, general agreement issues. I'm sure Rachel and I don't agree on everything, just like the previous Mayor Pro Tems, and I didn't agree on everything, but the cool thing is, you gotta work together and you gotta build council consensus. And if, if they can do those two things, anybody, anybody sitting on this council could be Mayor Pro Tem. And, and that's the, that's the whole point. I can't see, in the current situation, where there were four, there were four people that would violently oppose
I don't need to hear.
A, a council, a selection of the Mayor for, Mayor Pro Tem.
That's why it's odd to have it in there. I, I remember reading this a while ago and thinking, "That's weird, why would, in what situation would that ever be approved?"
Again, I think, I think it's also important for the council to vote on the Mayor Pro Tem's appointment, because that shows the public that, yes, the council is united.
I agree with that, too.
And so that's, to me, that's an important, that's an important piece.
And that's a very important point, I think.
So do we have to change it to
It's not just, it's not just a crazy mayor appoint a crony.
Right.
Well, see, that, that's on page two and three of the thirty-page document there, that Jill has suggested that unless there are four dissenting council member votes opposed to the appointment, the appointment, Mayor Pro Tem will be approved by council resolution. So that's all been, that's all been stricken.
Well, the, yeah, but automatically, if, if it's, if the council's gonna, let's see, during the regular meeting
We'll, we'll strike it, right.
Appoint, appoint the, from among, for two-year terms. And if it's voted on by, just, all you gotta do is say it's voted on by a resolution, and it was done.
I think that solves the issue, Mr. Mayor. If we, if we, if we vote on it as a council, as a resolution,
Yeah.
you could have your dissenting votes, but you're gonna have probably a consensus regardless, so.
Yeah, chances are, yeah.
You would hope. You would hope that the mayor would understand to choose, yeah.
It's like we're voting to get the mayor out, too.
So, are we agreeing to move this weird line?
But I like
For those in our audience, this would like For those in our audience, this is like watching a sausage.
So we could make it sound a little more adultish and say that the mayor pro tem will be approved by resolution instead of only if four dissenting people.
I think that's a very.
We could change the language to make it a little more civilized.
Yes. I think that's a great way to do it.
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's all I have and I can make those changes.
I want to talk to you about the last page, item four.
Okay.
Uh, the county, city council shall adjourn out of executive session and nominate and, and elect the replacement in an open, public session of council or place, uh, on the agenda for the next regularly scheduled council meeting. I think, uh, if you have a public session, it's, it is the next council, agenda, it is the next council meeting.
Well, when you, when you have your executive session, you have a special meeting to go into executive session. When you come out of executive session, you are still in a special meeting. So you could have an item prepared and you could appoint them at that time. Or you can wait until the next Thursday night meeting and do it like we did the last process.
Now, I understand why you need the language there. There's other, one other, one other point is we get rid of paragraph thirty point twenty-two on smoking.
We're allowed to smoke that.
And you go, you go to, you go next to, the next one down, thirty point ninety-nine, paragraph B. Any person who violates, violates the prohibitions of thirty point twenty-two, et cetera, et cetera. That needs to be taken out as well.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Wait, I'm good.
Okay. Any, any, anything else on, uh, discussion of council policy and procedures, man?
Uh, just thirty point one-six, uh, strike he or she because it reads better if you take out the he or she.
Which one?
Thirty-four one-six where, uh.
Sentence of A.
Yeah.
Okay. I can rewrite that, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
That's all I have, ma'am.
And obviously if you see any other, any other typos, et cetera, I'm sure Jill would appreciate seeing those before they get printed again. Okay. So I appreciate, appreciate your help and the help of discussion. And Jill, you got, you got some work to do, obviously. Appreciate your, your efforts. Uh, reports on recent trips, meetings, future meetings. I know we all, most of us went up to the legal cities and.
I just had a comment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You didn't look this way. What, but I just want to thank Rachel. We've been working on social media policy and talking about one for two years, waiting for the state. And I appreciate that she took a stab at it. And, uh, we'll get it fine-tuned for ourselves without the state. So I really appreciate your, your efforts, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Gray.
Anybody else over?
I just want to clarify for the public that I don't think this council wants a better phone or a different laptop than what we get. I don't want that to be confused by anybody. I don't, I'm fine with what we have. I think the, the question is whether you can use your personal stuff to get on or not. You know, we operate just, I operate just fine. I'd rather have my own little secure network on the side just like military-wise, no spillage. I don't want to be responsible for any of that. Right? Getting leaked into because I, because I use my personal stuff, but that's just my opinion. Um, so I don't want that to be misconstrued at all, that anybody wants like a better phone or a better laptop or.
Yeah, we're definitely not asking for the city to start buying Apple.
Yes. That's all I want to say.
Anybody else? All right. Uh, meetings, future meetings, check matching, uh, work sessions coming up. Where we're going to talk about, uh, whatever economic development organization we're going to, we're going to try to keep going. Uh, is there anything else, anything else? I'm doing both E and F at the same time evidently here.
That's fine.
Uh, anything else for trips, meetings, future meetings? Okay. Future discussion items and council requests? Any council requests? Yes, ma'am.
So the MPO, um, just recently passed our short-range transportation plan and our long-range transportation plan. And especially on the short one because it deals so much with transit. I think it would be good to have a presentation to update council on what was decided and some of the recommendations that may come out of that.
Transit, so can we have our transit folks set up a work session at some point in time? Sharon, what do you think? Who's, who's best to do that?
Yeah, I'm unsure. I'm going to have to check into who's best to do that because the short-range transportation plan is a work product of the MPO rather than of transit.
And I'm happy to present it, Mayor, if need be.
We get, can we get Karen to do it or?
Sure, we can look at that.
I mean, she.
She should be able to do that. Okay.
Or I can and she can be here to ask questions.
Why not?
Yeah.
That would be good.
Okay.
Okay. Answer questions, not ask.
Any other, any other council, council requests? Seeing none. Thank you, everybody, for the good discussion. Thanks, staff, for all the good work.
Thank you.
And we'll see you on Thursday, if not.